Call Oliver Springs Town Council. Meeting to order, please. Who would you call it up?
Robert Miller. Jeff Bass?
Here.
Kenny Brown?
Here.
Jason Steller?
Here.
Jeff Denton?
Here.
About six we go to the corner.
Stand in place, please. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shall we do this prayer, please?
My father, we approach the throne of grace with awe and reverence and fear and love and appreciation for all the things that you have done and you are doing and that you have promised you will do through your holy word. We know that if we ask for wisdom through the Holy Spirit from our hearts that you are granted liberally with that. We ask for that for these folks who have to govern the town, help us to govern it in such a way as to reflect you and your precepts and bring honor and glory to you. We thank you that the virus is slowed down quite a bit and it seems to be under control and we pray that you would restore the health to all the folks that have had it and that have it now, protect those who haven't gotten it from getting it. We ask peace and comfort for those folks that are in various service professions, military, first responders, healthcare, so forth, that you would be with them and give them peace and comfort and strength to deal with all the problems with which they have to deal. We thank you that you've given us these tests because without these tests we would have no testimony about how great and strong and powerful you are. Go with us now as we go into the heart of this meeting. We ask all these things in our son's name. Amen.
Keep it brief, minutes from last meeting.
I like the motion at this meeting. No check like that.
Now, motion on the second, any discussion? Call it up, please, Jeff.
Jeff Bass?
Yes.
Kenny Brown?
Yes.
Jason Steller?
Yes.
Jeff Denton?
Yes.
Tony's brother?
Here.
Bass.
Any citizen that wants to come forward to council tonight? We know y'all know that you wanted to address the council with your name and everything.
Yes, sir. My name is Jerry White and I'm here on behalf of the Oliver Springs Historical Society. I left you a flyer up there. It's just a little reminder that June the 19th at 6:00 Ethan Lively will be there in concert. The tickets are 25 bucks. Money goes to the historical society at the pay-in. But I'd love to see you folks show up. I want to thank you for the ones that were able to attend the memorial service up here on the hill at Rose Terrace when Ken Jaeger was there. We had a wonderful crowd, a big crowd, and they all went back to the museum at eight. But I want to say thank you for being there. I spoke to Thomas already about a couple of things that I saw that I'd like to see maybe somebody fine tune or take care of. One of our most beautiful buildings over here is the depot and it's in the dark at night. What's the problem? Are the light bulbs out or?
I don't know, but we figured it out. I'll be here nights, heck, and see what's up.
Well, they didn't come on. I've been here about three nights and they're not on. But that's one of our most beautiful buildings and I'd like to see that thing lit back up. And also down on Kingston Avenue, there are two large, I mean, large trees that are leaning out toward Kingston Avenue, right in front of the high school. And fellows, they ought to come down, I think. There's not a green leaf on them. They ought to come down before school gets back in session. Those buses stop and let the kids off at the front door, blocks all their traffic up, pass those trees. But if one of those suckers ever fail, it would be rough on somebody's car. Want to thank you for your time and what you did for the city. Thank you for all you did.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? No one else? We get the hum from something. We get the hum, you get the hum back here? Maybe it's that talk you just gave us still echoing up here. Okay, it's my turn, I guess. I have, again, thanks to everybody that's cooperated with us during this hard time this past year and we continue to have a few snakes and things going on. We are working on lights. I hadn't noticed the depot and I'm sorry because I've come by there after dark and I hadn't noticed it. Police has tried to keep a business on most of the lights, I think. But when we see the lights out, we need to notify somebody that can get them back in. I'll go check the lights tonight myself and with electricians if it's just a detection problem, not detecting dark, we might be able to fix it today, but I doubt that. We'll figure out what's going on. The storm knocked a lot of power out and it might be something that we've just got a breaker that's overloaded with the storm and get it fixed right away, hopefully anyway. Just time, I'm gonna take some of my time and let Chief of Police come forward, please. And he's gonna introduce his men or are they gonna introduce each other or?
Yeah, as you requested, I've got everybody here. Of course, I have two dispatchers that are on an alternating schedule that are not here tonight and I have two out sick that can't be here to introduce yourselves, but I've got the rest of them.
Mr. Rimmer did ask to meet as you guys come in and we don't ever see you except on the streets somewhere and we don't know your names, so.
Kara, you come on forward.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
You sound all right.
Do you like pace this way?
Do you like pace the honest you want to tell us who you are?
So I'm Kara. I'm the TAC for the Police Department, which means the contact for TBI. I grew up at Subri, graduated Rome State in 2008 for health information, spent 11 years in healthcare and the Police Department job opened up and I was ready for change. So I've been here almost a year and a half now. I started October 2019. I love this city. I love my job. I love these people and it's nice to finally meet you all.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
Thank you.
Back here.
Of course, I'm gonna introduce Chief Laxton. Everybody knows him, I think. He'll introduce himself, too.
We've done this once before, but I'm Captain Williams with the Police Department from Oak Ridge originally. Love the community, love working here at the Police Department. First and foremost, thank you all for everything you do. We appreciate your drive and dedication to knowing the direction that you're letting us go and you're helping us with that and if you had any concerns, we'll send.
His family's from Oliver Springs. His sister graduated from Oliver Springs.
Leaving maybe in '69, Linda Williams and Tom. Yes, that's my aunt. Russell Williams and Bruce Williams, my father and uncle.
Russell played football at UT.
He did. He got a scholarship. Him and Larry Seabirdsman from Clinton, '72, got a scholarship to go to UT in the late. So we have roots here and we love the area and want to make you proud.
Thank you. Thank you.
Most of you folks I've met on the street delivering packages, whatever, I'm with Ted Handy. Been here for two and a half, well, over two years. Was started here January 19th originally from Morgan County. Done 13 years Morgan County work for the Sheriff's Department. I've enjoyed my time here. I enjoy the smaller community and still happen to deal with a large county. All I have to do is worry about the community here. So far, I've enjoyed it and I appreciate everything that you guys have done for us. Hopefully, we can get everything straight in the way and have a department that you guys have brought up. I thank you for anything that you guys have done for us. Thank you. Another little one coming forward here from one of our smaller guys.
I'm with Kenneth Seaver. I've been here since 2014. Really enjoy this area. I grew up here my whole life. Worked for Morgan County for three years prior to come here. Appreciate everything you're allowing us to do, helping us get through with.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Sergeant Dutton. I graduated police academy in 2018. Worked at Morgan County. I got up here in May, a year in July. Absolutely love this community. I like what you saw. I said I worked for a county and it's a whole lot better just working for a smaller department and you get to know the people a bit better and I'm just glad to be on board and everybody's been pretty awesome here, so.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Todd Watts. I'm from another Morgan County.
You're new assembly, weren't you?
Excuse me?
You were probably new assembly.
He's got about a week on David. You'll meet him. I was trying to say, I've only been here for a week, so all I can say, it's been pretty wide open so far. Trying to learn your office system, trying to learn this little city, we end. Give me opportunity and I'll be here for you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
This guy, he's been around for a while. He worked at the funeral home for a little while.
Yep. How are you, gentlemen?
So, my name's Randy Lewis. I'm not from here. I'm a Katrina transplant, so ended up here and this has become my home. I've always had a soft spot for Oliver Springs. I worked for a short funeral home for a few years and I started serving in law enforcement in Tennessee in 2015. I worked for the Sheriff's Department, had many roles there and most definitely glad to be here. It's a great honor to serve this community. If you gentlemen or anyone in the community needs anything, I'll always give a phone call away.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Officer Owens for the Police Department. I'm an Anderson County resident, grew up there. After I graduated, went into the US Army active duty, spent seven years there, was an NCO. After I got out, my law enforcement career actually started in middle Tennessee, my jail Police Department in Wilson County. Served there for five years, K-9 handler, special unit supervisor, instructor in a few different areas there. Left there, came up working at the Sheriff's Office and I'm here in Oliver Springs now. Probably the best place you can work, hands down, with Chief Laxton at the wheel. I think we're gonna go some good places. I will say, if y'all see anything that we can improve on, please let us know. Door is always open and we'll do our best.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm the newest one, so I'll go last.
Yeah.
My name's Bennett. I am the newest one. I just came on the other day. I just came here from Anderson County Sheriff's Department. I've lived in the city for a long time, about five years of police, 10 years of fire. I'm also a member of the city fire department here and I have been talking to chief and hearing all the new things that's going on. I really wanted to just help out where I live and be a part of all this, so I really appreciate y'all giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
I apologize not putting you as the last.
No, that's all right. I'm used to it.
I've got one more dispatcher coming. Of course, if you have any questions about me, I don't know if most of you know me, you know, my background. I started in law enforcement in 2000, worked local law enforcement before I went to the Tennessee Highway Patrol. I worked their criminal investigations division before I transferred to the TBI. Worked the TBI as Drug Investigation Division in Knoxville. Since then, I left there and came to work here and I've been here for almost 16 years. Background was Hammond High School to Rome State and then to Liberty University out of Lynchburg, Virginia is where I had my bachelor's degree. And I'm hoping that Brittany has made it by now. I've got one more dispatcher that was on to introduce herself, but.
And I will say this while we're waiting, if you've not been in the Police Department lately, you need to go and see what they have done. Wow. Got a new dispatch room, looks phenomenal. Now they're redoing the bathrooms.
Yeah, we're on the last bathroom now. Kind of had to hold up because of doors was our biggest problem.
So, it looks really good.
Stand up.
Please check and make sure she knows when she's up.
We'll get back with you. She's just been on my last.
Okay, we'll bring her in when you say we'll let her come forward, okay?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, comments from, ready for you, Mr. Bass?
I don't know. I think it's Thomas.
No, City Manager, let's go.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm not the best Thomas. I don't see your sheet up here anywhere. Did you give me one?
Yes.
Oh, it's on front of the album, isn't it? You combined the two.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Morden Mike Paris and the Morgan County Correctional Complex for allowing the work release inmate crews to return to Oliver Springs. Thank you. Also, the contract asphalt crew, professional asphalt, has finished the repairs on Wind Rock Road and they're now getting scheduled to begin work on In Valley in the upcoming weeks and that's all I have so far, Mayor.
Okay. Now, Mr. Bass.
I'd like to commend the city workers who live keeping up with the bowling on the highway out there. It looks real good compared to what you see when you cross the line. I mean, they're keeping it up and they're keeping it looking real good. I appreciate that. And the bottom repair is this guy's.
He's worked well, yeah.
Oh, he's great. I mean, you run across him, just probably feel a little bit sick. That's all I have.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I know. As far as brush, there's still a pile of brush out there. You turn it into smoke for less. Well, they dug the side of the mountain out, hollowed rock. I don't know if anyone put it on us to get rid of it or.
We're not gonna get that. That should be burned on site.
Burn that on site?
I'll speak to the individual that's charging that tomorrow. I think we might have to move it back to burn it because the panelized. We have to move it in that area, but I'll find out how he wants to get it. He can get rid of it instantly almost.
Yeah. It'd be very hard for us.
Also, I know we had a bunch of limbs and stuff down on In Valley and I seen them go by today or yesterday. Pick them up and buy them. They look good and I appreciate that. I know we had the storm, did a lot of damage to different places. And just something that we've been beating around here for a long, is the trailers added, the diesel car dealership went out. Are they ever gonna get moved? Were you ever gonna get rid of them, the trailers and that two miles of the hall?
Yes, but when? I'm not sure when. We've tried to get rid of those a couple of times. We're gonna have to impound them and then.
They're gonna need us to do it?
Well, if they don't move them, the only thing we can do is serve them and then pound them. They've given them so many days to move them. If we impound them, we'll have to, we'll move them somewhere and have to pay to get them back.
I mean, there's other than that, there's like an old Jeep out there and.
There is. There's a Jeep and two canisters.
Yeah, it's an axle for anybody. They're nothing.
The procedure for moving it is where the building inspector writes citations to come in before the Oliver Springs City Court. And as we have discussed, all the court can do is fine them $50 per occasion plus court costs and the officer has to go out and write one each day. It's a continuing offense, but you have to write a new violation each day. The other option would be to file a lawsuit, probably in Chancery Court and ask for an injunction. And if the property owner doesn't clean it up, then you go back into court and ask the chancellor to put him in jail for contempt of court for failure to clean up the property. If the property owner, for some reason, is out of state or cannot clean it up, then the city cleans it up at the city's expense, but then the city gets a judgment against the property owner that may or may not be collected. So, the town has the resources on books that's been there for many years. It's just a question of whether or not the town wishes to commit the financial resources and the staff resources to do that because the finances and staff are in tremendous competition for many, many other worthwhile tasks. Not that this isn't worthwhile task, to prioritize. And that's when you say, can we do anything? Oh, yes. We can do a lot of things, but see, you gentlemen and the mayor and the city manager have to prioritize because Thomas can't be four places at once.
Well, I rode with them two weeks ago with our codes enforcer out of Kingston. They are on the list. They are going to court. He's getting with their lawyer if he has to. And each out of, each place in Oliver Springs that's been written up is on the docket now, not on the docket yet in court.
Well, that's a fight because you give them time to clean it up.
Yes, they're on the warning list now. Every one of them. We went Valley Drive, we went Highway, we went In Valley, we went Old Hammond Highway, went every street that we could get a car on. And they're up, his lady that takes care of those citations was with us and she was animating them against her list that she has and we had them all on here, so. The process has started, the process you're talking about. But we're gonna, we've done this once already and the lady that was supposed to take care of her problem didn't have the money, the money to do it. She was promised, somebody else had promised to take care of her. They broke the promise, but now that he's authorized her to make repairs and it's not very visible to most people, but it's out of nowhere area. And it's a trailer that they let get out of hand and, but they're allowed, he's allowed them now to go ahead and fix that up, so. They can make it presentable and she has a nice yard and everything, but if they can make that presentable, that one will pass. But the rest of her on the docket, we'll be on the docket and I'm sure you'll see some movement on that shortly.
In other words, where they're at's where they're at right now.
That's where they're at's where they're at. It's out of there. We've turned it over to them right now, to the inspector and the lawyer.
In other words, that gentleman.
I'm not sure who owns that property now. He sold the property.
Yeah, you know, the motor vehicle, car sale and car lot, whatever, it's gone too, right? All that's gone.
Yes, he's moved out, I think. I'm not sure. Do you know anything about that, Chief Laxton?
So the people that was renting the property to use it as a car lot has folded and have moved out, but the same property owner still owns the property. Our codes enforcer's been contacted with him several times and have issued warnings the same as, you know, the co-fitter's office, but he's not needed any of the warnings, so the next step is litigation.
Okay.
Tony.
Tony.
Melvin, yeah.
Yes.
I know that.
He wanted to get out of the business, so he sold it, but somehow it's, I think the deal might have failed through, I'm not sure. Is that right?
I'm not quite sure on the seller, but I know that he's been kind of doing the lease deal with the car lot, letting people lease his car lot and run his car lot.
Wow, okay.
But he still owns the actual property.
Well, it's not only that, it's the whole town. We're trying to get the whole town, not just one street, but all streets, but the main drag, it needs to be cut up, I guess.
It's an axle.
Gets more attention, yeah. The dirt needs to be flattened out, too. They got permission to build it, they want to have permission to flatten the dirt up behind it. We didn't give them that permission. That was somebody else. I don't know who authorized that, but. Okay, where are we at?
That's all I have.
Okay, it's up to you, Mr. Steller.
I want to couple off what Jeff said about the city workers. The man looks phenomenal from Memorial Day. They did an outstanding job. I know they're still, what, one or two shorthanded maybe?
Fully staffed.
Fully staffed, no, good deal. It's good to see the inmates back working. That's huge help, so. And captain, or captain, forgive me.
Chief.
Chief Laxton, doing a great job. Thank you for all you're doing. If I could or would, and I know what it's like to work overtime every week for five years up until my accident, I put in 50, 60, 70 hours every week. And if you don't think that's humanly possible, go ask my wife and she will gladly tell you that what I just said wasn't as true, minus when we would go on vacation. So imagine being a police officer here in this town and I was asking, I asked Chief Laxton, what does our overtime budget look like? He's like, we're blowing it out of the water. We really need to take a hard look at hiring two to four more officers. And I know, listen, the first thing that's gonna get brought up, well, that's a tax increase. Well, it might be a tax increase and I understand that, but at some point in time, you have to make an investment in the men and the women who laid their life down for us, right? I mean, they go out there, they are the thin blue line and I get it. I mean, I don't want to pay taxes no more than anybody else does, but at some point in time, you cannot just keep riding that mule or that horse just riding to the ground. And, you know, I want us to take a hard look at that when the next budget comes up or, you know. Again, I know nobody likes that big T-word, but sometimes it's a necessary evil and that's something I think we need to take a hard look at. And also, I have, Thomas, I have found a piece of property that we might, we might could look at for a new Police Department, fire hall, maybe even a court that I'd like to get with you this week about and let's maybe inquire and Mr. Cox and see if we can get some talks going. And the last thing I have is excited about the basketball court going in. I think there are several folks that are excited about it and some good things going on down at the park. And I'd also like to just add to, you know, going forward, the softball team is looking to build a batting cage for the team and listen, we have a very good softball team. I don't know if you all know this or not, but we do. We have a very good team. I think they were just a runner two away from going to the state tournament this year and they're looking to build a batting cage maybe this fall. And I know the last time they had a batting cage, unfortunately, I think some city workers may have accidentally demoed it. And so I think in just a good, a step of good measure, maybe going forward.
Can we use that as baseball also, Kim?
We could, we could. And maybe, maybe the city could maybe donate $1,000 or $1,500 to help build a new batting cage, just, you know, right there between the two fields. I've already spoken with one of the coaches and a boosters club member or the booster club president about it, so just something to think about going forward. You know, I think we have a great park. We have some, you know, really good teams and I think it would be well, money will spend and be a very good investment in, into our town, our community, so it's all happening.
Thank you, sir. We'll get Mr. Kelly on that, too, and then see what it needs to do that. And we'll bring it back before us and we can do some amount of help on that with some inmates, I think, and Bill will give a shout about knitting and stuff.
Sure.
Okay, you're up, sir?
Not this time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rimmer?
Yes.
Okay. Steve?
Yes.
You're up. Bring her with you.
This is Miss Brittany Price. She is the dispatcher that's been on all day for us today.
Oh, wow.
She just got off from work.
Thank you for stopping by on your time here.
No problem. I appreciate you guys having me here. Well, I'm from Morgan County and I worked at Morgan County Dispatch for almost two years and I've been working in Oliver Springs for about a month and a half and it's really been a good experience and I've really enjoyed it and hopefully have a good future here. I've already got my basic NCIC certifications since I came in this short time. I'm actually married to a sheriff's deputy from Morgan County. That's what got my interest sparked in law enforcement and then it's just kind of went from there. I just fell in love with it and everything's been going good, so.
Good to know.
I appreciate meeting everybody and hopefully I'll see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Chief Laxton?
No, sir.
Okay. Fire chief here? Old business, do we have any old business coming forward? Okay, the new business is discuss the possibly approved bleachers for Airhead Park. That's another one of yours.
I'm making a motion, Lee.
Wait, before you do, before you do, let's figure it out. There's, there's a bunch of options. So there's some options that we can do. Inside the packet, I put some photos of what this bleacher looks like. It's $3,900 for one of them. It is ADA compliant and it fit down there just fine. There's a couple of options. These are the concrete and wood bleachers that are down there. There's, there's two and two, so there's four of them total.
The, there's a couple of options, like I said, one option is, uh, buy one of these, buy two of these, repair all of these, other option is buy four of these, tear all these down, uh, cost of wood is up. It, it's probably gonna be pretty close to, uh, savings to repair these. People like these because they're higher up. Uh, these are gonna be, on this picture, you can see the size difference in the two, these are kind of small compared to. So they're, people like these, but they're not handicap accessible, but if we repair them and put a handicap accessible, I think that would, that would cover us, but.
Have you walked up and down those bleachers?
Yeah.
I did a couple of ways ago, I thought I was gonna fall and kill myself.
Yeah, we need to repair these big time.
They need to be repaired with garden rail soon.
Yes, we're gonna be fencing on the, on the.
Don't you think those are bad? What about like? The ones at the base? I feel, I saw them.
They're broken.
Yeah, well, he's including the bleachers.
Yeah, we have four of them to be repaired, so, um, I, I don't know how much the wood's gonna cost, wood keeps going up every day.
Every day.
Every day, so, um, I would like to fix them. Um, I kind of wanna, I don't know, I'm twenty, so whatever you guys want.
I'd like to demolish them.
You want to get rid of them?
I wanna get rid of them, I want about four, four sets of the aluminum bleachers.
Maybe brothers do, when he cuts trees, to make Herman's sawhogs, you get pretty wood.
Well, I was about to say, I do know a guy who has a sawmill, I really do. And, and I know where twenty-two trees are laying on the ground, I'm trying to get it right now, so, they're all pine. Sorry, whatever y'all want to do.
We've got a request in our own kind of schools, but it's kind of our school day, so we have to work with the maintenance guys and that's who would go forward to the school board to ask for money. But as you well know, Roan County, our schools in Roan County use our practice football field, they use softball fields too, they use the baseball field, they use the track when they want, and that community uses it also. But they don't, they don't add anything to the, to the purse. Uh, Ron Wade donated, uh, he got to commission to donate ten thousand dollars, I believe, to us a couple, three years ago. I called him this week and he said, you know, that's, we've taken the chance on that once and it's, it's actually a school board problem, a school problem at the Roan County School. And we had a Roan County Director of Schools that, at one time, that told us not to ask for any more money or she toes the gyms down to our students, our kids where they could play basketball. So, we didn't bother her anymore, but we are bothering the school board now and the school, and the school offices that can okay money for such a thing as this. And I'm sure they contribute to Rockwood and Kingston Parks and et cetera, if they were using them. And we're waiting on them to answer us. But meantime, we can approve this, if this, or disapprove, whatever you want to do.
Four bleachers will be fifteen thousand six hundred dollars.
Of course, this year's not in the budget at all, is it?
No.
That was my question, was it?
Yeah, it's not the budget for this year, because it's, this, we're in the last month of the budget year.
Is it in the budget year for next year?
No.
We haven't put it in there yet, have you?
It's over.
I was gonna say, you can make a motion second to buy or repair and have it, have it begin after July first and pay for that next budget year.
No, you just take a.
We have a meeting at savings too. He and I have a meeting Wednesday with the mayors and city manager of Roan County and Roan County boss and we're gonna discuss money for counties, for the different cities in the county. Uh, we have nine hundred thousand dollars coming sometime, but we're so restricted on what we've used it for, we hope we get some that opened up.
Infrastructure, real restricted.
It's, they restrict us to rugs, water, sewer.
Meters.
And meters and white band, that's a restriction right now, but we, I'm not sure what this meeting is about Wednesday at noon.
Or just bring this back up and say next council meeting, put it on the agenda for next council meeting.
I'd like to roll it if we don't, or else approve it or disapprove it, one, and we'd go approve it on, based on us finding out, you know, or anything, but I'd rather wait two weeks, I don't think it's gonna hurt us two weeks. We don't have too much more baseball and softball season on that. We definitely want this fixed for next year, if we don't get it done this year, we want it done. Cause I know when some of the kids at church was playing baseball for high school, I was going to baseball games with the old field and the bleachers didn't be replaced then, that's six, seven years ago.
Yeah, they're processed all of those.
Yeah. These bleachers here are off the low, there's a bunch of ballgame problems, these wooden ones, the fours. If you get like football, they're worth sets up so high, you know, but you can't afford to do that. But they're better, they're, they're light, you move them around, you have to, use them in different positions, but I think they borrowed two from the DAB field, didn't they, two sets to use for last term? And that's fine too, you move those, they're not anchored, but, so who wants to make a motion to roll or just?
I make a motion to be moved to the next council meeting.
Now, motion goes second, those who in agreement, seeing as I was saying, I will. Close use last time? Okay. I think we got one more here, you wanna explain it?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'll read it, I'll read the line for you.
Okay.
I discuss and possibly approve adding another module in the iWork program for property maintenance.
Thank you, Mayor, um, iWorks is the digital software that we've been using for the streets department, water department for work orders, it's our new digital work order system. Uh, what this is, is another module for property maintenance. You know how there's tall grass or there's junk cars or things like that that Mark needs to go and look at? What he can do with this program is, is he'll have an iPad and he will show up at the address, take photos with his iPad, it'll download it into that case, he'll open a case, download the photos into that case uh, that he has opened, he can determine what kind of case he wants it to be, if it's tall grass, he'll click on tall grass, it'll auto populate pretty much everything, it'll also even, if he's on the property, take his location, auto populate into the location, he can type his own location in. And it will, um, generate, uh, uh, pre-made letters for when he used to mail out for tall grass, it'll keep track of when he needs to check back in on them, he can also set calendar dates on that for that case to remind him to come back to this property at this date because their time's up. It'll also make it so when they gotta go to court, he can hit print and print every violation they've ever had at that property address. He can also do map views, um, we can also send work orders to him too, just how, how we do work orders, so if there's a tall grass complaint, we can start the case ourselves, send it to him, he'll go out to it, document it, uh, generate the letter by just pushing a button, it'll auto populate and it's a way to track it, way to keep up with it. And it's pretty much the same thing that we're doing, uh, but it'll be specific for property maintenance.
I'll make a motion to be approved.
I'll say.
Now, motion goes second, any more discussion, is this gonna cost our customers any money?
This is gonna cost you four thousand dollars, it's gonna cost you three thousand dollars a year. So, customers are the end user of all costs.
It's gonna cost our customers more money on the water bills, electric.
No, this will not come out of water, this is.
It's gonna come out of sewer.
No, it's not, it's not, this is not an enterprise fund, this is a general fund, uh, use and it'll be a general fund expense.
It's budgeted.
As far as we're doing right now, what's the difference?
Um, the difference is, is that.
Hundred percent difference.
This is like a light year ahead of what you're.
What we're doing now work?
No.
It's proven this time worked, they're back in the last hundred years.
Well, I'm saying that is, you know, and things change.
Just to bring us up to date, where you have a picture of that house, picture of that yard, picture of those cars, picture of this and that, and it won't be, everything's open to the public anyway, viewing, I guess, but it won't be used, uh, to show me, you and I, it'll be used to show.
Think of how long it takes him to write a letter. Now, the letters auto, will auto generate, auto populate, it'll have everything already in it from the open case. All he has to do is click on what letter he wants and everything he's already all filled in before fills into that letter and that letter goes out labeled to those people, for those people, and it's a way to track it.
When they get the letter, what do they do, with it all the way?
I don't know.
I mean, that's what they're gonna do with what, you know.
I don't know what they do with the letter.
If they're fine with it, or is, you know, if we're spending our money and then we.
The hope is, they correct the problem.
Supposedly.
They can do what they choose.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, but we're still, we're doing things and.
He could drive every street in town and get everything in one, in one day with this and it takes him months to do it individually, driving and stopping and making notes and sometimes come back, talk to the chief or whoever about it.
This is gonna be twenty-first century stuff.
I viewed it with Thomas, the guy demonstrated on the internet with us and he, he showed us, he had his mouse going and showed us every movement you can make with it and it's impressive how they do it and.
Well, I, I'm agreeing with this technology, I'm just saying if, if what he's doing and then the customer throws it in the garbage again, what, what good is?
I mean, you can throw a speeding ticket away and not show it to court, it'd feel like it too, but I wouldn't recommend it.
That, that, that is true, but, you know.
Well, you've got it, you've got it, you've got it on your.
If we don't enforce it, what's it used to do, that we can't enforce the people who lose their junk out here at the, the car dealership for the last three years, how are we gonna enforce something like this?
You gotta document it to do it.
Document it, and then it costs, to go to court, it's, that's why we come in with the court costs, legal fees, is we can't afford to do it.
If we do nothing, if we do nothing, we're gonna be right where we're at.
Well, I understand doing nothing, but I'd like to see something work.
We won't know if it works till we try, so.
You know, and this is coming out of the water board budget?
No.
Coming out of a general fund budget?
General fund budget.
This has nothing to do with sewer or water bill, or water bill.
Nothing to do with.
This is the thing that the town, that's what it has to do with, and it means that you've got the documentation in hand on one, one location that can show all of them and you can transfer them to your computer, anybody's want to.
Yeah, you can even log in and look at all the open cases if you don't like it.
I understand all, you know, you're saying, I'm just saying if, if, like, you don't wanna do nothing, but you do something and you still can't do nothing, so we're, we're spending, what do you say, three thousand dollars to start with on?
It'll be a four thousand dollar startup, three thousand dollars annually.
Three thousand dollars, wow.
But think of the time it's gonna save, it'll maximize its time and they can get twice as many cases started.
This gentleman here is, they're talking about his, I seen the name here, is this the gentleman that's gonna be doing this?
Adrian, Adrian.
Adrian Stewart?
He is the one that prepared the iWorks proposal price, Adrian Stewart did, that's who.
He's with the company, but who's, who's gonna be actually doing this?
Mark Mill.
Okay. Okay, now, I just.
We have, any more discussion?
No.
Any more discussion? We do, motion we've done second, any more discussion? How are we doing?
Jeff Bass?
Yes.
Ian Brown?
Yes.
Jason Stubbler?
Yes.
Jeff Hinton?
Yes.
James Brown?
Yes.
Hey, do you have anything else? Anybody have any last moment things?
I do.
Yes, sir, go.
I just like to urge everyone, there's, there's a lot of talk about this school property, we'll call it. I think it's a tremendous opportunity, needs to be handled right. But I would urge you, just the one-on-one approach usually works pretty good. Let your, especially the school board members or your county commissioner, we have Mr. Wyatt here in the audience tonight. And I'm not speaking for him, I'm just saying, call your representatives, that's what we're for. But it's a, I had favorable comments from the last two super tenants knowing this Sunday would happen. But of course, we don't have a contract and, and didn't need one at that time. But what I'm saying, let your representative know how you feel about it. And the more, we get the ball rolling and if it rolls down the hill, it should get a little bigger.
You're talking about acquiring, maybe the gym, the old gym and some of the old buildings down there?
Yeah.
That was cool.
Yeah.
That would work.
Anybody else, last minute thing?
Uh, our council meeting the first week of July, I think it's what, July the second? And historically, we have not held council meeting that close to July the fourth. Do you wanna consider taking action to cancel that meeting tonight or do we wanna wait till the next meeting in June?
Let's wait till the next meeting in June, if you don't care, wait till the next meeting in June, please.
Well, it's just up to you.
We missed several meetings during this COVID thing, we're required to have meetings and it's absolutely no business.
I will be out of town, uh, but if you have enough for a quorum, because enough members are gonna be here, there might be family events or something like that, I'll just call that to y'all's attention because I'd hate to have the meeting and have two councils and show up and the mayor or something like that and not have a quorum.
Well, well.
That is water board meeting too.
I think we'll know more at the next, next meeting. Is everybody okay with that, making decisions next meeting? Anything else? Any motion to adjourn?
Some of it.
Got a motion, any second?
Second.
Those in favor, stand your feet.